Okay.
Great, thank you. We are here for a Lake County Board of County Commissioners's regular meeting. It's Tuesday, February 6, 2024, 11:00 a.m. We have quite a packed agenda. So we'll just dive right in. People could please silence their cell phones. And we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment.
My allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have a packed room. That was our rousing pledge. Okay. Fellow Commissioners, if we could look at the agenda and whenever ready, look for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second, but I do, I did not get to review item one in the consent agenda. So maybe we, unless you all did, can we amend that to remove item one in the consent agenda?
Sure.
I'm absolutely fine with that.
So I'll make an amended motion to approve the agenda with the removal of item one in the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Great. Any further commentary or discussion?
No, none. Thank you.
Okay, then call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye. So we have the approved agenda with the amendments in the motion. Sorry, one amendment in the motion. So we can move on to community information items. I have none.
I don't, I don't have anything today. Thank you.
I'll just say, you know, tax deferral, tax exemption programs that are going on. Go to the assessor's office or, you know, reach out to your, the senior center, veteran services officer. Assessor's office would be the best place to go to get you to the state forms that you might have to fill out and check your eligibility. And wildfire work again being done in July with Teen Rubicon. So we need to send out a letter to neighborhoods along County Road 17 to solicit interest in any defensible space work that you might want done on your private property. But the other goal of that project will be to do some right of way work along County Road 17 and continue the work that was done on the demonstration project that we, on the county land on County Road 4. So heads up on that and reach out with any questions, please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If I could maybe just add to Commissioner Mudge's comment about the tax exemption programs. I think people know more about the senior and veterans exemption programs. But there are, there's a state-run tax deferral program. Sorry, the exemption is probably the wrong word, tax deferral program that because of our property tax valuation increases, all properties basically are potentially eligible for. So that one is less well-known, but there are tax deferral programs out there to help with the increases that we've been seeing. So, okay. Just wanted to turn to public comment, and these are for items not on the agenda. We do have the ordinance as agenda item number one, so we'll hold off on that. I know there are a lot of people in the room looking to that. So this is for public comments, not on the agenda. I'm seeing none. Sorry, I can't see how many people are out. But, okay, and none online. So, okay.
There's one more thing we update on the property tax notices.
Oh, thanks.
Just so everyone, for everyone's awareness, and we continue to communicate this out, but on your property tax notice, there was a technical error on there. The Lake County School District PK bond was omitted from the tax authority column, as well as the tax levy column on some people's property tax bills. So that PK bond should have added 3.048 to the tax levy total on the property tax bill. So despite that omission, the calculation for the total property tax owed is listed correctly on every bill. However, if you do the math, by missing that mill, it will look like that number's off, but the property tax amount is correct.
Okay, thanks for adding that. Okay, well, that will move on to agenda item number one, which is discussion and consideration of a proposed Lake County Ordinance Number 202401, an ordinance addressing multipurpose use on county roads. So the Board of County Commissioners will now conduct a public hearing. The statement that I'm reading shall be incorporated into and made a part of the record on these proceedings. The Board of County Commissioners have jurisdiction pursuant to 30-11-101-2 to conduct a public hearing concerning the adoption of ordinances regarding health, safety, and welfare issues as otherwise prescribed by law. The purpose of this hearing is to consider adoption of Ordinance 24-01, an ordinance addressing multipurpose use on county roads. In doing so, the Board will consider findings as presented by staff, stakeholder input both from public engagement and written statements, and today's public comment. The procedure to be followed in this hearing is as follows. County staff will make an initial presentation. After that, any other persons either supporting or opposing the ordinance may present public comment. During the public comment portion of today's public hearing, parties are asked not to submit redundant, irrelevant, or cumulative testimony. If someone has already made the point that you wish to make, simply say so and express your support or opposition. The Chair will also require that all comments be made to the Board and that there be no dialogue between the speaker and members of the audience. Public comment is limited to three minutes. At the conclusion of the public comment portion of the hearing, the Chair will entertain a motion to close the public comment portion of the hearing, and the Board will discuss and weigh the information presented by county staff and during public comment. The Chair of the Board will entertain a motion on the ordinance. The motion may take the form of one of the following. Option one, be to approve Ordinance 2401 as presented by staff. Option two, approve Ordinance 2401 with amendments. Or option three, table Ordinance 2401 for further discussion and consideration. Are there any objections to the jurisdiction of the Board or to the form or substance of these proceedings?
That's better.
Thank you. Hearing none, county staff may make initial presentation.
Wonderful, thank you so much. I had emailed my PowerPoint to the boardroom. Do that, and if somebody doesn't mind driving, over here. Which one would you like?
It's the PowerPoint.
This one?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Ready?
Yes.
Thank you. So first, we just wanted to kind of show the history of the amount of work and different opportunities that we've had to work on this scope of work that we're bringing forward today. And, you know, we started back in August of 2022 with a public listening session. We've had numerous work sessions. On top of everything that's listed here, we've also done individual stakeholder interviews. And we've had an online opportunity for input, which we forwarded and maintained and provided to the Board. So we've had a good amount of public engagement, including all those different opportunities for work sessions. It talks about the moratorium and when we adopted that to give us an opportunity to look at this scope of work. And then just kind of, just the overall history. Go to the next slide. And arriving today, of course, with a public hearing. Today is the public hearing, as Jeff has outlined, on the ordinance and the proposal by staff. So first, we just wanted to review the approved scope of work as outlined by the Board for staff. And that was first to create an OHV road use guide. This is meant to be a flexible tool that we can update accordingly when there's public works, projects, as well as be a tool to inform the public on appropriate routes. And then next, we were commissioned with developing a use permit. And so we're going to go into a little bit of detail on the process, the ordinance, the application, and the maintenance agreement. And then youth and education enforcement for general and or public use. And then lastly, sustainability. So this has really been the driving goals behind the scope of work that CPD has engaged in. Next slide. So this is just a copy of what the road use guide looks like. Again, you know, we can toggle on or off layers, but again, it's hopefully going to be a tool that we not only use now in the permitting process, but we also use in a further sticker program that we're going to talk a little bit more about in sustainability. Next slide. So the process. This process is designed to be administered by whomever the designated permit administrator is. And then the final decision-making on the permit process for commercial use will be the Board of County Commissioners. On the application process, asks a variety of questions. It looks at all of the items listed, which is a very thorough review of the operation itself and includes things like where the course, permitted course is going to be, if there's public or private land additionally, like forest service permits or private ownership. We want to know the volume and impact of the degree of use, the number of employees, and any particular qualifications that either the business requires of the applicant or they hold. And then really looking at that emergency planning, you know, what has the operator done in order to create a safe operation? And so we want to make sure that we refer this out to OEM, buyer, law enforcement, to make sure that we have good situational awareness and coordination. We want to look at food and beverage, making sure, again, that public health has weighed in on the appropriate use of or providing food and beverage. A sanitation plan, a maintenance agreement, we're going to talk a little bit more about coming up in a further slide. And then it outlines the approval criteria that is within the ordinance. And then, again, we're going to look at each of those items individually. And then it just reiterates, again, an insurance requirement that is also within the ordinance. Next slide. The standards. The standards, and first, we're going to go through the standards associated with commercial OHV use. It requires a list of compliance of general use that we'll go into a little more detail. It requires any applicants at this time to have been in operation for the previous 12 months before their application. It does require the commercial permit and that you have a base of operation, either in the city or the county. It identifies that our collector roads are roads that we use as main arterial, or main arteries within our community and evacuation routes. And so it's not appropriate to submit an application for use of those roadways. It looks at a way in which it regulates the ability to do any roadway maintenance unless it's been properly approved by public works. And it requires operators to have copies of their permits on them at all times, whether that is the actual commercial recreation permit, the conditional use permit, or approval from public works to be in operation. It aligns with the state insurance requirements. We do consider these under the ordinance to follow the same rules of motor vehicles. And so there are insurance requirements. It does require performance under the permit, whether that be the conditional use permit, good standing with business license, or the recreation permit conditions. And then allows for the possibility of a transfer if an operation were sold. So consideration that that may be something that happens at some point within the business. And it allows them the pathway forward to come in and get Board approval to go ahead and transfer that permit to a new company. Next slide. So the approval criteria. This is something that we, you know, we really spent some time wordsmithing to really arrive at what best findings needed to be made in order to be able to approve the permit. And so staff will take in the application, refer it out to all the identified stakeholders. We mentioned some of them previously, public works, public health, PROs, law enforcement, and emergency management just being some. It'll be kind of on a case-by-case basis. So the staff can bring forward an application that the Board can consider with all of the different variables that we talked about in the application process. After review and hearing all of the different referral agency comments, then these are the findings that would need to be made in order to issue the permit. The permit could be issued based on conditions that could arrive at these findings. So these findings are essential to such items as not being detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare of the county residents. And that we want to make sure that the use isn't being overly intensive, either of the roadway or what's existing use in the area. That they're not, that either they have mitigated or their plan itself doesn't constitute any vehicular or pedestrian hazards. And that the emergency management plan has been reviewed by your referral agency and is consistent and reliable for the degree of use. And that any man-made hazards or natural hazards are adequately mitigated. So those are really at the heart of what the application process should arrive at in order to be able to issue the permit. And again, it could be issued with conditions to be able to reach those findings. Once the permit is issued, the ordinance then talks about enforcement. And it calls for first, the ability, we talked about fairness in the process of administration of the road, the commercial recreation permit. And that is first, being able to have the opportunity for an administrative review before it would be referred for a show cause hearing. So if there's a violation of the permit, there is an opportunity for, or a complaint perhaps, that is fielded by the administrative staff, the permit administrator, to be able to rectify that situation with the permit holder before it would be referred to the Board for a show cause hearing. And the show cause hearing gives the Board the opportunity to review the case and hear the evidence and testimony relevant to the violation or complaint. And then gives them the opportunity, as described in the ordinance, to either put the application, or excuse me, permit holder on probation, or worst-case scenario, it may be need for revocation. But that is built into the enforcement of the commercial recreation permit. Next slide. Next slide goes into Class 2 petty offenses. And this is from your law enforcement standpoint. It outlines penalties and the fines is outlined. It does consider that a third offense could result in revocation if found guilty of the offense. So it does give, definitely incentivizes performance under the ordinance and under the permit for compliance. Next slide. This is the general or public use. The scope of work, really, that after we went out to the public and the feedback that we received and what we've, we're able to get a consensus of the Board, that for public use, we wanted to just reinforce some of the existing elements of previous ordinances in reference to this use. And so there, as well as working with law enforcement, just to make sure that everything was up to date and very relevant. So you'll see those standards are the requirement of being a licensed, at least 16-year, a licensed 16-year-old. And if you're underage, then you have to be accompanied by a licensed operator. The helmet law, eye protection for all operators, the insurance, we kind of talked about that. And that's a, one small revision within the ordinance that will show to you that we've just considered these motor vehicles and subject to motor vehicle requirements for insurance, proper registration in lighting. That point A to point B has been more specific within the ordinance that we are talking about from a point of origination to a recreation destination. And that we discourage using OHV for any type of primary transportation use. The daylight hours and making sure that the equipment is properly equipped. Consideration of the natural environment, you know, the ordinance talks about protective tundra and just being aware of environmental sensitivities in operations and compliance with any notices and directives of public work. So obviously, notices and directives should be adhered to. And again, keeping in mind that this is subject to general as well as commercial. And no roadway maintenance without, again, public works being aware of it, approving it, and having proof of that agreement. And then no excessive noise disturbance, consistent with our noise ordinance. Next slide. Again, the fines is outlined, outlined within the penalties by law enforcement for any violations of the model traffic code. Back to the scope of work, youth education and outreach. This is something that we really received a lot of input from, from the public. Concerns of how currently youth are operating unsafely within the community. And so we've enlisted the help of PROs to look at programming and research and development. We have the asset of the OHV track and looking at the possibility of also, law enforcement and CPD has talked about in PROs about a diversion program. And so instead of fines, potentially attendance in OHV programming to help educate and outreach to the youth. So that is our goal and being supportive of that. Enforcement in general use, law enforcement oversight and initiatives. So there are initiatives that law enforcement is in the midst of doing. And the sheriff is here if you have any questions about that. But some of that, obviously, is not something that he necessarily wants to share in a public hearing because sometimes enforcement needs to have, you know, just some initiatives behind it that we may not share out on all of the different methodologies of being able to capture inappropriate use in inappropriate areas. And then further, further planning work in the staff report that we've provided a couple different times, we have talked about the, looking at maybe creating some natural barriers to use along the Mineral Belt Trail. You know, those are areas that we've seen be problematic. And so we've had a kind of an array of different ideas, everything from some barriers in conjunction with public works, but that does kind of hinder some snow management. We also had some thoughts about some natural landscaping that might be an, also a nice amenity for the Mineral Belt Trail and also create a natural barrier to some of that use. I know CE4 is here and they've been successful in, I think, deterring some of, you know, the OHV in inappropriate areas with some of the tools that they've implemented. And so I think we would continue to look for ways to discourage improper use in areas that we don't want to see motorized use. Next slide. Sustainability. So the ordinance immediately is addressing this by limiting the amount, the, or the, the current operators to anyone, exclusive to operators that have been in business for 12 months previous to the application. And this allows for, within the ordinance, dedication to continuing to look at the sustainability. The sticker program is a program that CPD will continue to work through. This will be a great data collection source. The sticker program is meant to require a local registration. At the same time, we can do education, we can provide them with a map, we can provide them with a fact sheet regarding the model traffic code. It's a really great direct touch with OHV users for education as well as data collection. And so that will continue to be on the scope of work that will continue past the adoption of the ordinance. PROs participation in looking at future sustainability. We've been in early discussions on that, but look to continue to collaborate with PROs on that. And then really, a nice added feature, didn't know at our last work session exactly how soon the city was going to address the expiration of their moratorium. But now we do. And Leadville is proposing an ordinance that would limit the amount of OHV rental and guiding companies. The proposed limitation is for two. And that first reading of that ordinance is this evening. And so that really aligns with the same sustainability goals identified in this ordinance of limiting the amount of guiding until future work can be done on identifying the sustainability of increasing the degree of use. So, and I know that this goes here as well, and me want to provide some comment during public comment. But this is just a really great opportunity for both the city and the county's codes to align with one another as far as sustainability. Next slide. And I think that is everything that I have within the presentation. However, I do want to, oh, there's one other document that I sent over. And I'd love to make sure the whole audience or everyone present can see the small changes. We did receive-
Did you send it to the email, Anne?
Oh, it's CC. I'm so sorry.
CC's?
Yeah.
That's right here?
Yeah. This has a highlighted of the minor changes that have been made by staff. So after review with the county attorney, we did receive public input that suggested some tract changes to the ordinance. We have reviewed those and we've made some slight corrections and clarity items to the ordinance. But you'll see right here, this is the, the proper citation for designation of the roads for multipurpose. And so that's been updated. And then if you want to scroll a little further, I think we've only got a very other limited, we already kind of talked about it right here. So just, so liability insurance, the city doesn't require license insurance on OHVs. So for the purpose of this ordinance, we consider OHVs to be motor vehicles and subject to the minimum liability insurance coverage. And so that has been changed in there. And then just some clarity at the very bottom of the ordinance. Section 10. Oh, it is in section 10. If you, CC must not have covered, she was going to highlight it for me. So it's at the very end.
Yeah, section 10, full recording.
So just in the recording. And so it just says that the, it's just the first sentence there. The Lake County Clerk is hereby advised that this ordinance was ordered to be introduced, read, and published in full the 16th day of January 2024. So we've just updated that. But other than that, I believe those were our very limited changes to the ordinance. And so happy to answer any questions that the Board might have in anything that we presented. And we do have the hard copies of all of the documents. We will have all of these available on our website today. I do, and if there's anybody here that immediately wants any of these, CC can either email them to you, or we can get you a hard copy before you leave. But they are the, there's one other item I should bring up in the cost agreement for the commercial recreation- in the cost agreement for the commercial recreation permit as far as maintenance. We did do some, pass, there's a packet for you. So in the cost agreement, one of the things that we, we spent some time talking about during the work session was how we determine participation in road maintenance. And so the cost agreement now has three different options that really tracks with what the board, I believe, was guiding staff on during the work session. And so one of those is that the public works has approved the participation in grooming or road maintenance by a commercial recreation permit holder. And so that they can actually perform grooming or road maintenance. Or the public works has approved an alternative method, an agreement that has satisfied their participation, subject to their permit. And then three is a default. So if, if, if there hasn't either been active participation or another arrangement, you know, we've heard that, you know, there historically has been arrangements made. This allows public works to make those determinations. But if nothing has been done by the expiration of the permit, then we would ask for the gross receipts relative to the permit operation. They may operate in other areas, so, you know, we just want gross receipts for anything relative to the permit. And then a percentage applied to those gross receipts. And then there is a provision in here that if the permit administrator or public works director, they may require the permit holder to provide additional documentation to determine the operations to those receipts, again, related to the permitted commercial use. So we would ask them to bring those within 30 days of the expiration. And there is an opportunity if, if either the permit administrator or public works doesn't want to ask for additional documentation on that, they can. But that is, that is a slight change. We also made this not winter-specific any longer. It does cover all seasons. And so there has been a slight change to that, which then aligns. We also made the insurance coverage, liability insurance for commercial operators at a million. We've, in response. And I think we've addressed all the other concerns that came out. I think we've sent those to you already in our newest iteration. But yeah, that was like calling out Harrison Avenue as a state highway, which isn't always readily identified by everyone as being part of the state highway system. And so we've made, I think, all of the feedback that we received during the work session and we've incorporated it within all of the documents, within the ordinance, and then the supporting application and cost agreement as well.
Any questions, Steph?
No, not today.
Before we go to public comment?
I do have just a couple. So the last comment you made about the slight change in the mitigation and the fees, I want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly. So the agreement and the arrangement, the mitigation has to be made during the permitting process. And so it's been, it's not, and, and the result?
Yeah. So it doesn't necessarily have to be at the permitting by the time that, by the expiration. So this requires that within 30 days of the expiration of the permit, they have to prove to us that they participated either by grooming or-
But the agreement needs to, it needs to be agreed upon what that mitigation will be.
So they just thought, they, they sign it saying that they agree to one of the three. And at the expiration, they, they will come in either with their approved, approval from public works that they have participated. If they haven't, then they would go to the default situation of having to provide receipts. So at the beginning, it's just an agreement and realizing that they have to. And then we, we affirm that it's been done and verify it at the, at the expiration because obviously it needs to happen during the duration of the permit.
How does that prevent any entity from creating their own mitigation that's not approved by public? I just feel like that kind of opens up-
The ordinance says that you're not allowed to do any maintenance-
But I would think that the-
Without participation. So, but, but at the point of them getting the permit, they may not have, you know, they, they are, they will have to file, follow what is in the ordinance. So they, they're not allowed to do anything until they haven't approved. At the end of the permit, we determine what the outcome of that was. So were they approved? You know, were they, were they able to achieve the improvement, or the approval from public works? Or were, did public works find that they did contribute accordingly? And if nothing has been resolved by the time, at the end of their expiration of the permit, then, then we would, the fee would become due and payable within 30 days.
I don't understand why that's left to, like, be determined through the use period rather than be determined in advance at the permit, at the beginning of the season.
I think, I think it could be. I mean, I think, I mean, I, I think, I think by the duration, we need to have, we need, so it's a, it's a measure to make sure that by the end of the expiration that it has occurred. There's nothing that stops them from doing that before. This, this just makes them aware, A, that it's necessary. And B, at the end of the arrangement, at the end of their permit, they are, if they haven't been able to participate within an approved method, that, that fees are collected at the end. So there's no, there's nothing that stops them from doing it ahead of time.
Can I add a question? Or, so if I'm deciding, I mean, the, the idea is that there's some leeway, like if you apply during the summer for winter operations, you might not have all the details nailed down in June for something that's going to happen in January. But you have to indicate which of the three pathways you intend to take.
You don't have to indicate which of the three pathways you're going to take in the beginning. You can, you could, in their application, they can say, we are going to apply to public works to try to do our own grooming. Or we're going to work with them, we don't have the equipment to do our own grooming, so we're going to work to get approval that can be within their application. We're just making sure that it's actually done by the end. And if, if, if there was not a contribution made, then it, it has an opportunity to collect that at the end.
And, and, and sorry, and then like the, what I was trying to get to on that. But then, I mean, if you do take the pathway as something that has to be approved by public works, I mean, that would happen, I mean, you would, you'd have to get that approval before equipment touches the ground. So, so I think that begins to answer your question. It's like it, not everything is being left to the end of the annual permit cycle. I mean-
I understand the logic in, if you say you're going to mitigate by actually doing or some improvements on the facilities, and that hasn't happened, then here's the trigger where if that hasn't happened, then the fees are collected because we need some level of mitigation. And so it will be monitored at the end of the season whether the, the conditions have been met in a permit. But, and maybe I'm misremembering, but I do, I feel like that condition needs to be met before the permit is approved.
I think there should be a plan within the application for approval. And, and then this is to make sure that it, it, that they actually perform. Yeah.
And that plan would have to be approved by public works if it pulls-
Right. And that needs to be approved before operations can start.
Yeah, because that has to be approved with your permit.
Okay.
Yeah.
I thought, okay. So it has to be approved before operations start with your permit. Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that something that's going to be separately approved by public works?
Hey, hey, we're, we're, sorry, we'll, we are in a formal hearing, so we'll open up the public comment period as soon as we're done with the initial questions for staff. Sorry.
Okay. I think I'm saying the same thing. I just would hate for, you know, I think, and I think that can be a swift process with public works approval. And it should be something that's done before operations start in each season. I did have one more question and presumption. We're, we're here to approve the ordinance. And one thing I realized, maybe I had made a presumption that the process of approval might include the planning commission. But that is not, it doesn't seem to be that, the, the case here.
And your planning commission, first statute, you know, oversees land use decisions?
Right.
And because this is not, and just, this is why we, we, you know, I, I would say that you still have your recommend, your referral agencies who are basically your recommending bodies. So, you know, you have, the permit administrator is going to take it out to whomever your internal referral, referral agencies will be depending on the application. So you'll still receive, you know, that, that feedback specific to each application. It's just that your planning commission isn't statutory, doesn't oversee roadway, kind of.
But since, yeah, I think since there was-
There's no reason you couldn't refer it to the planning commission if there's something that comes up specific to an application and that you would like their feedback from, but they just wouldn't be your recommending body. I mean, you can refer, the, the permit administrator can, can refer the application to whomever is identified as a stakeholder.
Okay.
I had a procedural question for staff and me, the county attorney. So moving on to the, opening up the public comment portion of the hearing, do we need to have a motion to open that up or, 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 okay? Okay, just wanted to check on that. Sorry.
One more.
Yeah, 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 please.
These, the permits are not part of the ordinance.
Correct.
Okay. Just want to make that.
It also makes them more flexible and tangible.
Right.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay, I think at this point, I'll entertain a motion to open the public comment portion of the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Any comment or discussion on that?
No.
Motion. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. The public comment portion of the hearing is open. Just wanted to reiterate a couple of comments you made at the beginning. So this is a, a public noted, a, a public comment in the hearing. It's not a town hall. And I'll say a couple of things about that first. There really cannot be discussion between audience members. And also, the BOCC will have a discussion period after all the public comment is heard. We will not answer. I know it can sometimes feel a little frustrating when you give public comment and we are silent. But we will consider the public comment and then we will have a discussion as the BOCC after the public comment period is heard. So I just wanted to iterate that because, again, it can sometimes feel a little frustrating when you give public comment and don't get an answer right away. And then second, as we said at the beginning, if we could just respect everyone's time and really please keep, try to keep comments on topic for the ordinance elements. And respect the three-minute time limit, please. So with that-
Do you have any signatures?
Yeah, sorry, I was just realizing.
I have a signature.
They can forget them really quick.
Yeah. Well, let's see, yeah. Well, so we'll start in the room. And yeah, when, when, when you speak, if you give your name and either address or if you're speaking for an organization or entity, you know, please say, state, state that for the record. So that's all in the ring.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Zach Donk, my lip 231 East 7th Street. And I'm just representing my household that I provide for. First, I have a quick question and then a real quick statement, simple question. Anne mentioned two companies, and I just would like to know the names of the two companies.
You're talking about that the city may-
There was something that Anne was talking about with two companies, not three, not four, but two companies, and I'm just wondering what those two were. Anne, do you have any more clarification on that?
I'm not, I believe those under the city consideration are the two that exist, both Level ATV and, and Elmo.
Sounds good. Just a quick, you know, just some thoughts I've had for the last eight weeks. We'll keep this super short. This is called the rental. No guide service, so a tourist rents a motorized toy in Buena Vista or Bragg. They tow it to Lake County. Playing with it here is where they get stuck, they get lost, and/or they wreck. Or Lake County can be as Sedona, Arizona, with a motorized toy rental company on every gas station corner. If it gets to that, I fear the busiest elected official will be the corner. Yes, guiding reduces injuries, saves lives and resources. Don't sell it short, you'll regret your choices. Don't get in the way of the people that help. If you don't like my poem, read thousands of five-star reviews on TripAdvisor, Google, or Yelp. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else in the room? Sorry, I was pointing the, in the back, and I mean, Jackie had a question earlier. I wonder if that had been answered or-
Was asking, I, I just-
Sorry, can you state your name just for the record?
Mario, White Mountain Stonehill first.
Okay, thanks.
You were talking about having to get approval from, from public works to have some kind of grooming plan. So that's not going to be authorized in the approval of the application. That's got to be done separately with public works, or will that be all kind of tied in together?
Well, sorry, maybe we'll take, I mean, not enter into discussion, but answer clarifying questions during comment. So, I mean, I, I'll take a crack at it. And I think as, as we discussed, I mean, it, it is, it is not required to have all the details of that management plan nailed down and approved by public works at the point of permit application. But it does have to be done before any of that management plan occurs. Because you need that public works improvement, approval, sorry, to do any physical, you know, snow management or whatever it is in that management.
There was also like talk of having to pay a fee to the Stonehill Club, I think I'm at the last meeting, with like a percentage of that. Has that been, that was really brought in today?
Let me answer that, Anne.
Um, so, yeah, there's two different alternatives. Whether it is being approved for grooming or another approved method that, and maybe that is a monetary participation that public works agrees upon. But at the very end, if you haven't been able to settle on one or the other of those, then by default, we do have that the operation would come in with grocery receipts and a percentage would be applied to those grocery receipts and, and, and due at 30 days after the expiration. So there's a couple of different opportunities for the commercial permit holder to kind of navigate their own path. But if they haven't been able to arrive at that, then there is a means for participation at the end. Sure.
Then we're going to hold it for ECU's.
Okay.
Okay. All right, anyone else in the room? Cisco, you look like you were-
Cisco, nice.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, thanks. I just wanted to reiterate and thank you, Anne, for sharing that the city will be hearing tonight about the proposed cap on business licenses. And then the second reading is March 19th. So if, if one can't come tonight or contribute comment tonight, they, there's about a month in between that someone could also learn more, contribute a comment, or, or come participate in the meetings. And then I have a question about how this, how do e-bikes fit into this regulation? Or maybe are there different kinds that would fit in differently?
Again, I will take, like, narrow clarifying questions with staff, yeah.
Absolutely. So there's three different classes, and I would say that everybody's still trying to kind of figure out how to consider e-bikes right now. And so that's why, under the definitions, we, we've added in the consideration that, that it's evolving, what's considered OHV. And so I don't think that we have a determination yet on that, where e-bikes are going to land, like class three. But we've provided an awareness of it that they may eventually be considered, you know, one of the classes may be considered an OHV. So we've, we've just allowed for some growth in there in the definitions of an OHV.
Thank you. And at this moment, as it's currently written- Thank you, and at this moment, as it's currently written, would any of the e-bikes be considered OHVs?
Um, not, not in, and not until they're, they're classified. We'd want another source that has, has defined them as an OHV first.
Like the state or CPW or something?
Yeah, we haven't been able to see a finding, um, from any of those agencies that have provided us clarity yet, so.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Was that good, Cisco? Okay.
There is one behind.
Okay.
This is Madison Noddy and I'm here on behalf of White Mountain Snowmobile Tours. Way this ordinance is written does not provide on clarity, but rather uncertainty. For the record, we're not against permitting, we have permits with the county and we have permit with other, permits with other entities. Permit approval criteria number one, the proposed permit shall not likely be detrimental to the public health, safety, welfare of county residents or other recreational users. Who's determining what detrimental is, what is detrimental? Point number two, the permit shall not result in over intensive use. Who's defining what over intensive use is? What's over extensive, what's the data to define this or support this? Staff has stated that the CRP permit is set in stone on an annual basis. This is a financial burden to our business as well as a burden to success. An annual permit does not allow us to, the security to invest in the future. Upfront payments for snowmobiles, snow cats, replacements, parts, safety netting, safety signs, staff planning and so on cannot be planned on, on an annual permit. It is truly a burden and it could jeopardize our business. Again, we would recommend that staff reconsideres to have these permits coincide with our pre-existing permits. Grooming, I have limited time on this one, but we would have loved to have been part of the conversation. In the previous meeting on January eleventh, the twenty twenty-four, Commissioner Piba had asked that staff engage us all in the conversation. There was no outreach. It's another example of a statement being made that X, Y, Z is going to happen and it never does. Throughout this process, we've tried to be patient and understanding, but this is one of those examples as why this process has been misleading and unclear. I don't have enough time to address all the concerns and factors that have been proposed, but I hope what I've shared provides some insight. For the first time in thirty years, it's not a lack of safety. It's not a lack of supporting and networking with other local businesses. It's not a lack of community involvement. It's not a global pandemic. It's not a lack of business leadership. It's not a lack of teamwork. It's the county that's proposing the challenges. Lville is a pretty special place. Our backcountry is a pretty special place. It's unfortunate to see ideas proposed like a limit accessibility for all to the outdoors. Staff has not once initiated reach out to a stakeholder who's been in this county for over thirty years. Has an outstanding record with the Forest Service, has held staff for over twenty years, has worked with the county relating to this business and another one within the county on several occasions. I've been to every meeting, I remember clearly a staff member saying they don't understand why this is such a tension-related subject. Because of its livelihoods, it's our jobs, it's our businesses, it's the employees that we've worked with for twenty years. See uncertainty that this is all put forth.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else in the room?
Thank you.
My name is Nate Hammer, I work with Lville ATV Tours. Just like to echo and elaborate, just on this gentleman, sorry, I forgot your name in the green.
Zach.
Hi Zach. Really, really well said, I mean guided. I don't think we're addressing, um, fully the, the outside folks that are coming into town. They've rented our own machines, um, when we're up on tours. We kind of feel like we're the ones providing direction and, um, you know, saying, please don't drive your machine from out of town on our tundra. So I just, again, like Madison said, I'm not necessarily opposed to permitting and that kind of thing, we all want to work together. But I think we're missing some of the pieces here with the, I guess what I call the real violators of, you know, some of the abuse and misuse of, of our area, so. I said this in our last meeting, but I kind of think the commercial operators were the, were the good guys. We want to, our mantra is safety and, and proper use of the area, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Uh, yeah, Peter.
Peter Day, Twenty Seven Days of Drive. First, I wanted to, you know, to thank all of you for, you know, for working on this issue. It's been, it's been a long time now. I've submitted multiple comments, you know, I had discussions with staff. You know, I agree with everything that Anne had in her presentation. I just disagree that the, you know, that the ordinance as was published in the paper and with these few minor changes is still not as clear and concise as it, as it could be. I think there are lots of questions in there, especially, um, you know, there were things that were removed from ordinance twenty-three oh one that are going to be, you know, diverted and handled in the model traffic code, but that's still under revision. So we haven't seen how that, you know, how that cross play works yet. So it's hard to evaluate, you know, the elements of the ordinance, if they've been removed and, and put somewhere else and you don't know how they're, how they're handled there. So, um, so that said, I'm, I'm disappointed that, um, the, the clarifications or at least the parts of the ordinance that I indicated were unclear to me, you know, weren't, you know, weren't better handled. These are, you know, some pretty minor, um, you know, minor changes. But I do appreciate the opportunity to comment and the opportunity that you guys took to, to have a look at them. I guess I would say that, um, you know, when and if this ordinance is adopted, you know, then implementation happens. And I think there's a new opportunity, you know, to, to clarify, you know, things that might not have been as clear as they could be in the ordinance. And so I would, I would, um, you know, like to, um, I guess ask the commissioners or state that I think that there should be a, a robust implementation plan. There should be a schedule, maybe a, a new resolution, something that, you know, to make sure that the sticker program is, you know, is put into force in a reasonable period of time. Make sure that there's, you know, um, whether it's done by pros or somebody else, that there are maps that users can actually use to show the route, show what's groomed, you know, show the quality of the roads. The land use, um, GIS map's a good start, but it's certainly not the, you know, not the end. That needs, that needs additional work. And, um, you know, so just opportunities to, you know, to convey, you know, and maybe the sheriff will do this. You know, what's it mean by, um, um, an underage driver has to be accompanied by a licensed driver? Is that on the same machine or is that in visual sight? Not clear to me what that, what that means, so. So I guess my point is during implementation, you know, let's have a robust process for doing that and have some, um, you know, some ways to, um, measure progress. Uh, make sure that base of operations that require conditional use permits actually have them. I think there've been operations that have been operating without conditional use permits. So.
Peter, that's your time, if you could.
Okay, well, thank you for your attention.
So he goes, one in the back?
Yeah, I just wanted to elaborate.
So, sorry, can you just say your name?
Eric, kind of, Curry, just public speaking, um, public comment. I just wanted to elaborate a little bit on, um, a little bit about what Maddie said, and as someone who has worked a lot with, um, annual permitting and understanding long-term county permitting with Frisky Cooper, for example, asking these businesses that have been in operation for decades to submit annual permits to run their business is asking a lot. And it's asking a lot of the people that already work so hard for those businesses to make their livelihood, that an annual permit is asking, as far as I'm concerned, too much. But there should be a elongated multi-year permit available. And just as Ski Cooper, the Nordic Center, we do have to submit annual and seasonal operation plans. Obtaining a permit is a much different process than providing an annual plan. So I think the, there should be some serious consideration and again, clarification into what this annual permit looks like and also having the option to have an elongated permit from a company that's, multiple companies that have operated for multiple years and understand what they're doing. That is all.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Hi, my name's Lucas Miller, um, I'm speaking for, uh, as a guide for the community. I just want to speak about the importance of a guided tour and the safety oriented, uh, way that we all operate. That's one thing, we are all safe, we, we always want to make sure that we keep people safe in my career. The most traumatic experiences that I've heard about were self-guided tours. And that's one thing that I always tried to gain to keep away from, having those bad situations happen on our tours. And I think that we all train each other to make that happen. But also, we are a community oriented. Every tour that I take, I speak about my city. I try to get guests that are going to Breckenridge, they own all these very nice expensive places. I want them to focus here, bringing the money to our restaurants, bringing the money to our community. That's it.
Thank you. Last call for comments in the room? Before we go online? I'm seeing none, um, and then online just.
If you want to read John's into the record, he made, uh, John Hergert, who's came in first and then Ting was second.
Okay, uh, so this is from Joseph Hergert. Appreciate you taking the time to write this in, since, uh, you're not able to be here in person, that's totally fine. Do you know what may concern? I'm writing to express my concerns regarding the proposed ordinance on regulating snowmobile use in our county. As a member of the community and a manager of operations in the snowmobile industry, I believe it is crucial to consider the impact of this ordinance on both businesses and recreational users. Firstly, I would like to highlight the significant contributions that commercial snowmobile businesses make to our county. These businesses not only provide employment opportunities, but also contribute to the local economy through tourism and recreation. Their presence enhances the overall appeal of our county as a winter destination, attracting visitors from near and far. However, my primary concern lies with the proposed requirement for an annual commercial use permit renewal. While I understand the need for regulation and oversight, the current proposal does not align with our existing Forest Service permit, which is valid for a period of ten years. This misalignment creates unnecessary bureaucratic hurdles for snowmobile operators and impedes their ability to plan for the future. By requiring an annual CUP renewal, operators are faced with uncertainty and financial strain. It becomes challenging to make long-term investments such as purchasing new equipment or expanding operations when the permit validity is in question on a yearly basis. This inconsistency hampers business growth and jeopardizes the sustainability of commercial snowmobile operations, uh, in our county. I urge the, I urge the county to reconsider the proposed ordinance and align the commercial use permit requirements with those of our Forest Service permit. Adopting a longer term permit structure similar to the ten year validity of the Forest Service permit would provide much needed stability and certainty as snowmobile operators. It will enable businesses to plan strategically, invest confidently and continue contributing positively to our county's economy and recreational offerings. I respectfully request that the county take into account the concerns raised by the outfitters in the snowmobile industry and work towards a solution that supports both regulation and responsible business practices. Thank you for considering my perspective on this matter. Sincerely, Joseph Hergert, White Mountain Snowmobile Tours. Okay, thank you. Uh, are there any other written comments or just that? Just that one?
Just that one, yeah.
Then I think, uh, Ting, I think you are, I'm the only one I'm seeing online, so, uh, please go ahead, Ting.
Please, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great, um, so I want to just say that I agree with Zach and Nate mentioned. We started to mention that, oh, in writing, addressed that to Board of County Commissioners in writing over a year ago about this ordinance and proposed special use permit process. Does, there's essentially no enforcement for out of town commercial operators. So we feel like, um, the operators with the base of in Lville or Lake County are not being treated fairly because out of town operators can still operate without the permits or anything, um, in Lake County, just as usual. And we are facing this, uh, additional permitting process. Secondly, I want to say I agree with what Maddie brought up, it's extremely vague. In the approval criteria about, it seems like everything is very arbitrary and, um, subjected to, uh, what BOCC thinks. While there's no clear specific criteria to say what, um, what is being approved and what, what's considered not as approval. Third thing about the maintenance agreement, it's very, um, again, it's also extremely vague. And in my opinion, it's not really an option if everything is subjected to Public Works approval. Cause we really don't know, there's no visibility of what's Public Works, uh, will approve or not approve or what they're looking for. And so in my opinion, it's not really a, um, an option because Public Works can just say no to all the maintenance, uh, agreements and asks us to contribute a, a percentage. And, um, I don't know, maybe I missed it in the ordinance as it was not sent to us. With the most updated version, we never seen this ordinance, um, until today's meeting. And so maybe I missed it, um, but I don't even know what percentage of grocery seed is in ordinance being asked to contribute. And so it's just, it's just really vague. Public Works can say no to all the maintenance. If we reach agreement to pub, with Public Works with agreeable contribution, then is that agreeable contribution be a hundred dollars a month, a, a year or ten, ten thousand dollars? Yeah, we just, we don't know, and it's just, it is so vague and it's have such a significant on our operation. And, um, lastly, I just want to reiterate what Maddie said, there's absolutely no outreach from anyone from the county, um, regarding the updated ordinance. We never seen that. We don't know that this meeting is happening until I click through four different links to read through the BOCC meeting agenda. No one told us the meetings there, um, so it's just the communication is limited, that's all.
Okay, okay, thank you, Ting. Okay, I am seeing no other requests for public comment in the room or online. So at this point, I'll ask for a motion to close the public comment portion of the hearing.
So.
Second.
Okay, and go for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. So the, uh, public comment portion is closed. And we can go into forward discussion. I don't know how we want to handle this, I, I'd noted, uh, three or four, uh, sort of kind of bundles of questions. But I'm very open if there are topics that either of you want to launch into first. I, I can just say, I mean, there's the question of how rentals are treated. The question, the question of annual permits versus longer permits. And then I think there, uh, maybe a third one is some potential, you know, vagueness or perceived arbitrariness in some of the criteria or process.
And to that point, I think we need to maybe go over a little bit, the CUP process versus the commercial recreation permitting process.
Okay. But open if there are other.
No, I haven't.
Comments or questions or items of discussion you wanted to lead off with? Open to that.
Uh, no, nothing that I think needs to be mentioned first, go right ahead.
I can, I mean, I can take a stab at starting on the rental question, I mean, mine is, and I think certainly personally, I definitely see that as an issue that needs further thinking and discussion. I think our understanding here is that there are, there are different authorities that control that than what we're dealing with in this ordinance. So it's just going to get dealt with in a different parallel process. So I know it feels a little unequal that this one's going first and we haven't gotten that one nailed down. But I think again, it, it, it's just not something that we felt we could directly address in the authority we had under this ordinance. Happy to, you.
I'm happy to comment on that too. So in review of, of a number of different counties, the way rentals of the units were to describe where somebody, you know, rents one down in BV and brings it up, those are pretty much treated like rental cars, you know? And so they're subject to the individual users, the general conditions for that. So as soon as they take it off the lot in BV, then they become responsible for the client with the, the general user requirements.
Yeah. Anne, I don't know if staff had any further comment on that issue, and sort of how you, how you considered it.
And I also think that, um,
And I also think that, um, this sticker program, I, we need to do data collection to kind of determine counts of, you know, what kind of impact, um, that we're seeing. Also, um, my understanding, um, from rental companies is that machines do have GPS. You know, they have rovers that are out on, I, I, I don't know how, um, successful that program is, but they have rovers that are constantly out, um, responding when there are incidents. I'm not saying that they probably can respond as quick as our operators that are on, that are local and on site and, um, just are good, good stewards and have a code of ethic that might respond quicker. Um, but, um, in, in looking at rental company practices, um, the machines do, um, are tracked and they do have, um, uh, response, um, if, if there is a situation. And then again, uh, working with Chris on identifying that these users, if they are not abiding by the ordinance, uh, model traffic code, um, are subject to the same penalties, um, uh, under the ordinance. Uh, so there is enforcement on the individual. Um, and then we'll be able to do more data collection and have numbers, um, with rolling out the sticker program. So we'll have a, a, a better idea of numbers that we're talking about and impact, um, for further consideration.
And no other guide company outside is permitted based on the language from the current.
Not guiding, right.
For guiding.
Right, right.
Any other thoughts or comments on that, issue rentals? Um, so maybe take a stab at the question of annual permits. I think my understanding is that in the language, there is already, uh, the ability to go to, I think, three-year permits. Um, I think my, I mean, my feeling as one commissioner is that this is an entirely new process. And to lock in in year one, something that we will learn from the first cycle, to lock that in for ten years has risks. Um, of locking in something that didn't work exactly how we had hoped. Um, so I think our, at least my, my understanding and intent with that, you know, annual and then the ability to quickly go to a three-year cycle is to make sure we have some learning time to fine-tune this and then again, not lock in something that isn't what we would wish for.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I agree with that. And I also think that if your operations over the last number of decades haven't triggered this conversation yet, then I don't think there should be a concern that, um, there isn't potential for that opportunity to get a long-term permitting. But I think through our rolling out of this process, um, we really do need to, eh, create a monitoring and, uh, reflection on the process, um, over the next few years.
Yeah, I would agree. Um, and you by chance have a timeline for what it looks like to go from an annual permit to a three-year permit? Or is it just basically on the boards?
Performance-based.
Performance-based, okay.
But there's nothing stopping it happening in year two, right?
No, absolutely not. And, and I think, you know, things that, that will come into consideration is something like having a King Air Force service permit. Yeah. Um, you know, those will all contribute to, um, the decision-making. So, um, inasmuch as this initially is just as much for us to make sure that the administrative process is working, um, you know, there's, there's certainly room in there for consideration on a case-by-case basis of, of different other, uh, consideration and evidence.
And, and a follow-on question for clarification, the annual and three-year options are laid out in the permit documents, not the ordinance, right?
That's correct.
So we don't need to revisit the entire ordinance to change the, you know, annual, three-year, or other timeframes down the road?
Exactly.
Okay.
Furthermore, the commercial recreation permitting, we are talking about reviewing on an annual basis, but that is not imposing that timeframe necessarily on a conditional use permit.
Um, that, well, it just, I mean, it depends, right?
Yeah, it will depend.
Yeah, it will just depend on, you know, any condition applied to the conditional use permit.
And then can you briefly go through, you know, I, I, I understand that all of the outfitters have been communicated with to start the conditional use permitting or where is appropriate, and they do have the option for that land use. Um, so I know that the contact has been made and, um, uh, where, where?
Yeah.
Where does the commercial recreation permit, this, the road use permitting, fall in with the conditional use permitting pieces? If they overlap?
They could be done concurrently. There's no reason that you couldn't, um, apply concurrently for both. Um, and I would say that, yes, we've had sit-down pre-application meetings with every current, um, outfitting and guiding company that exists, uh, currently. Um, and, uh, but yes, they could be done concurrently. If they do the conditional use permit first, then there would just be a condition in the conditional use permit recommended by staff that they do the permit prior to operations. So either concurrently, um, uh, just like we do site plan review and a conditional use permit together, these could, these could be done in the exact same fashion, um, so that, uh, you know, for expedience and efficiency.
Any other comments on the annual or three-year process?
No.
So maybe we could turn to, so some of the comments, um, and input on the criteria being a little vague around some aspects. Uh, I can take a stab at this. I, I, I will say when, when we first started this over a year ago, I had thought we might get into more um, quantitative or map-based criteria, like that we might actually rule out certain county roads or put like real clear quantitative, you know, restrictions on certain intersections or areas. Um, and I think I've been persuaded, again, as one commissioner, that sort of be careful what you wish for. You know, that without having a chance for some better dialogue through the permit process, you know, we could overstep or make some, you know, ill, you know, poorly thought-through decisions if we got that precise, in some of the criteria. So I think for me, that in a nutshell is how we ended up with these, what I can understand, feel like vague, right, you know, relatively vague criteria. But I think there is some benefit to that in that the permit application will be a discussion, not a set of quantitative rules imposed from on high. Um, and I think related to that, uh, a, as I look at the criteria and the permit process that's been outlined, it, you know, it, it, it reminds me a lot of like our special event permits. Where again, it's like, you know, that's how our race series operates every year with an annual special event permit. Um, and, and, and other events, not to pick on them. And it's an iterative discussion about what's working and what's not working. Um, and I, I think there is value in that flexibility versus a more restrictive, quantitative approach from the get-go. So that's my speech on that. I don't know.
I would, I would add to that, I agree, and I would add that, you know, in our, in our experience through land use permitting, you know, the, these are all the same criteria that many folks have been through, um, through several, you know, boards, uh, reviewing that and conversations with planning. Um, and, uh, just to emphasize your, you know, it is to the benefit to, for the applicant to argue their case under those and to create and emphasize where their, um, meaning, meaning goals are not triggering, you know, on undue impacts and, and other thresholds, um, of concern. And yeah, there's no way we could possibly, uh, create some formulaic rules that actually apply fairly to everyone. You are either hitting everyone or hitting everyone unfairly or not, or missing some very?
Yeah.
Big impacts because there's different operation plans, there's different areas, um, of operation. Uh, there's different volumes, I mean, the list goes on, so.
Yeah, I think the, the vagueness, um, presents an opportunity for each guiding company, to have flexibility on conditions that are applicable to them as an individual company that are not uniformly applied across all companies, which then creates jeopardy, um, for each of them if they can't meet those conditions and criteria.
Right.
And I, I wonder too, um, if you can just speak to the process of, um, you know, the vagueness and definitions of overuse and detrimental and, and those kinds of things and how the staff, um, brings those recommendations to the planning commissioner or the board through any other land use application?
Absolutely, um, so, um, you know, and it also speaks to due process. So it's bringing the evidence forward, um, that would substantiate that the finding can or cannot be made. And, um, the applicant has just as much opportunity to bring their witnesses themselves and their, um, best application forward that can make those findings. So, you know, it really does, um, provide, um, due process, um, and the opportunity for the applicant to bring the evidence forward that supports those findings. Um, staff's review of it is with those findings in mind. And so when it goes out for the referral agencies and a review of the application, um, that is, is the basis of the review for, uh, for staff. So, um, then you go through the public hearing process, which has that evidentiary period when, um, eh, there's equal weight on both sides to be able to present that evidence. Um, and then the decision is made on the presentation, uh, on the record. So, um, you know, it, it really is built for fairness on both sides.
That was my list of answer questions, discussion. So turn it over to either of you for other, other topics you wanna cover.
I think I just, I, uh, sorry, I have to circle back to the encouraged, like the, the options for mitigation. Are we encouraging the first two? We are encouraging the first two.
I've heard two of the, yeah, I mean, I think of the solutions, you know, eh, the last is, is if, if something hasn't, hasn't been able to be aligned on. And in speaking to all of the operators, they have talked about whether they groomed or, um, how they, um, participate in, in grooming. So, you know, we, we have had discussions with them on how, um, they perform their own maintenance. We have talked to the snowmobile club, we've talked to Public Works. Um, you know, we've really looked at that, that for the majority of the use, what we've found is that they do actively participate in probably, um, a pathway toward for compliance. But it is if, if one operation or, so then, but the, the, the option is there. If it hasn't, then that, um, widely what we've heard is that they do all participate, at the existing companies. Um, so this was, uh, meant to be supportive of, of what we heard from, from the different, um, companies.
Right, yeah, there, there is either an agreement, um, based on experience and time between the snowmobile club or their own equipment to operate and, which is also kind of in agreement with the snowmobile club because of their grooming operations. Um, you know, the, the users are mitigating that impact on those areas. And it is also very possible that if there is, I mean, any fees that we might collect, I might imagine, would go to the snowmobile club to then mitigate the actual facility, right? So in theory, you should be able to make an arrangement with the club or with somebody before that happens. Um, okay. Okay, um, I think, I think that's all I have. Um, I, well, I'm maybe one more, just the, you know, um, referring to the traffic code and the other issues of law enforcement. I mean, again, I think we just, it all can be very nuanced and we really have to peel out exactly what it is we are addressing here in this ordinance. Um, and, um, I do think we sure do need to figure out how we are working with partners, um, and law enforcement to help meet kind of the demands and the issues that are ongoing with individual users.
Any comments, as you say, in share spectacles here? You know, I've been working on what revisions to the currently adopted model traffic code would be needed in the event that the commissioners decide to adopt this ordinance. So it's pretty much teed up and I don't think there would be much of a delay in, in rolling it out. And the good thing about that is it will provide consistency. And I hope, um, Councilmember Tharpe will perhaps use that to encourage his colleagues to look at revising the city's model traffic code adoption to then incorporate some of these provisions based on whatever they decide on, on their pending legislation as well.
Mm-hmm, okay. Any other comments, Sheriff?
Yeah, for sure. You know, my focus is on the, the safe, the safety side of things on our roadways and, and making sure that all operators, whether they're commercial or for personal use, are just obeying the laws. Um, and that's not really addressed in the Colorado revised statute, so that's why we're working on it through the, uh, mo, the model traffic code for Lake County, which would apply to O H P just so that we're making sure that we're coming to complete stop sets, stop signs, and we're not speeding. And then anything in addition to that, we're also looking to address through the model traffic code. Um, with some basis on what the ordinance is requesting, um, what the commissioners approve, on what they allow for use on our county roadways will be addressed through the model traffic code. So it is based off of the Colorado revised statute, which is a capital to our county. Thanks.
Thank you.
I don't have anything else?
Another thought popped into my head. Um, on, back to the mitigation pieces, just, and, and I think the winter is really easy because there's been so much coordination that's happened already. Um, but I do, you know, I might throw out there that we weren't, we wouldn't, I don't think we would want, and it would be a different, it would be different circumstances in summer activities that might have, um, impacts, you know? Not expecting an outfitter company to go get a grader and do roadwork like that. I mean, those are, you have to appreciate, again, why we step back and have it a bit vague so we can get pretty detailed on what exactly we're talking about, which season, what applies, how these different considerations really need to be, um, mapped out um, between every application and request and, and how the county maintains its facilities. So just wanted to kind of point out that that, you know, that could look pretty different between summer and winter.
Sure.
Okay. All good?
I am, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I don't have any big, um, issues with our, this latest draft. Um, and I appreciate all the time and the conversations that we've had over it. Um, and then, you know, as we implement, uh, the additional permitting for the roadway use, we'll, it might be nice if we can, I think after every season, uh, we really look at that and how well that this meets the community needs and commercial use.
I think we're good, um, continue to kind of create a licensing P D. I mean, you already can have a check-in on that country. And so, you know, just some of these, and, um, processes and policies that we're creating, um, probably an annual kind of review and check-in to just see, um, how things are rolling out will be really beneficial to make sure that we don't need to make any kind of adjustments.
Mm-hmm.
Sure. I think we're at the point, um, of, uh, seeking motions and to refresh, I think we have three pathways. One is to approve ordinance twenty-four oh one as presented by staff with those minor clarifying edits. Uh, option two is to approve ordinance twenty-four oh one with any amendments that any commissioners wish to, to add to the motion. Um, or, uh, option three, to table the ordinance, uh, twenty-four oh one for further discussion and consideration. So there's the three pathways.
Um, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance, uh, twenty-four dash zero one, an ordinance addressing multi-purpose use on county roads, um, as the latest version presented.
I'll second.
Great, any further, oh, Chris, sorry.
I'll just, I'll for, for the record to say that with the amendments noted in the most current version, that the two changes that staff presented.
Yeah, I has, I called them clarifying changes, not amendments, just to distinguish from the second option.
Yeah, the, well, when they're, but any changes to the text, then when it's published, we need to publish the provisions that were in fact changed from the published version previously. And a considerable amount is for that.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
Would you like me to?
Okay, amend your motion.
Okay. Um, I'll just, I don't know, I'll withdraw the motion, if that's all right.
Okay, yeah.
Um, um, so I'll move to approve ordinance twenty-four. Um, so I'll move to approve ordinance twenty four dash zero one, ordinance addressing multi-purpose use on county roads with the amendments presented by staff.
Today.
That's it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Great, any further discussion from commissioners?
None for me, thank you.
None for me?
I don't have anything else, thank you.
Then I will call for a vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, three to zero, the ordinance twenty four oh one as presented is approved. Thank you, everyone, for all the work.
It's really put, thanks, it's hard work.
So, we have ten more items on the agenda. Okay. Yes, I would, I noted C four, so I was gonna say if we could work with staff to identify which ones are critical.
Well, C four is next.
Yeah, okay, so let's quickly do C four and then we can have a discussion of how we want to handle the remaining agenda items at the time. Is that good with everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, item number two, discussion and consideration of a PSA with Cloud City Conservation Center to support a deferred maintenance program. Tim, you're gonna lead off and then.
I'm sure, so the board awarded Cloud City Conservation Center three hundred thousand dollars this year when in this contract to professional services agreement will be two hundred thousand dollars to bolster their energy rebate.
Assistance fund.
Assistance fund, which will go up, which will benefit homeowners and renters in this community up to a hundred and twenty percent AMI with up to five thousand dollars in repairs to their home. And with that, Emily, I'll provide a written quarterly update to myself and then a, a year-end report out to the BOCC. Um, anything else I might have missed, touching on?
Yeah, I think, I mean, we talked about this quite a bit during the budget allocation process, so not, hopefully not a surprise. Um, any questions before we entertain a motion?
I just have a couple.
Yeah, yeah, please.
The three hundred, the two hundred for the existing programming and then the one hundred thousand that we have meant to expand on with accompanying that to a, with a deed restriction of some sort. Um, it seems to make sense to me that we pull that out of the agreement because there's nothing in the agreement actually outlining how that hundred thousand is spent. And so when we create that, maybe we can amend the agreement?
Um, yeah, so that.
Just simplify things?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
So that was my intent of leaving the three hundred thousand in there, one was to call it out and then we can amend this agreement as is to add in the deed restrictions.
Okay, if that's your intention, okay.
That seemed the most plausible for that, since they're both, I mean,
'cause I don't know.
They're doing the same work, it's just the higher dollar amount for the deed restriction.
Yes, and I don't know that we're asking C four to actually administer like that pot of a hundred thousand dollars. It's just in combination with their programming, I imagine us actually administering a deed program. And, and that accompanies with the work that's being done at C four.
Uh, correct, so since C four has, I guess, one, like the client base, the relationships with the contractors and all of that, um, so they would manage the funding for the deed restrictions. Uh, the county commissioners would choose a model deed restriction to go with the higher amounts of funding for those larger projects.
Yeah.
Above, well, way above five thousand dollars.
Okay, yeah, okay, okay, we would, yeah, we, right, that agreement would come through for that work, okay, sorry.
We'll, we'll also only invoice you for the two hundred thousand, we're not gonna invoice, like, we're setting aside deed restriction to be continued at a later date.
Yeah, okay. Um, and then just maybe a deed, on one, on the third bullet of the qualifying household that, household does not already qualify for another assistance program that could address this issue. Um, I mean, I think our additional support is wanting to enhance those programs that they do already qualify for. I just want to make sure we're not.
We put that wording in there because many things can fall under energy, health, and safety. And so essentially, that's so that someone can't apply to this program to pay utility bills that could be paid through another program. They just don't want to fill out the application. Um, you know, not all of these applications are easy, they can be very hard for people to fill out. And we just want to put the emphasis that we have to, you know, steward these resources to the best of our ability. And so you can't circumvent going through the process of applying for LEAP, which can take up to thirty days or longer, um, by going through this program. So that's what that wording is. We definitely are trying to bundle programs together so that we can get the most work done possible. This we put on our application and our requirements to ensure that, um, we're encouraging community members to apply for all of the possible programs, that they're not just going through one program to avoid having to apply for others.
Right, right, yeah.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, I wanted to get that on the record because I think that this, and, and I think you could consider, I could interpret that, another assistance program that doesn't address the issue, it's not that the assistance per, program might not address the actual physical problem or repair, that it might not address the level of funding necessary to fix that. So you could be eligible and be under a different program.
Yeah, you can still, you can go through.
And apply for this to actually get the full scope of work done.
You can absolutely go through both. Um, we, our purpose of that is purely so that people aren't going, trying to use one program when they should be going through another.
I think, I thought we were on the same page, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, it's good.
That's all I have, thank you.
Then, yeah, I call for a motion on agenda item number two.
I will make a motion that we approve the professional service agreement PSA with Cloud City Conservation Center to support a deferred maintenance program.
I'll second.
Great, any further questions or discussion?
Nothing for me.
None for me, thank you.
So call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, the PSA with Cloud City Conservation Center is approved.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Um, so on timing, so I have to step out at one to give testimony, um, and then we have a one thirty Board of Health meeting. Uh, I could certainly. Oh, the two?
You're welcome.
Did that just change?
No.
Sorry.
No.
And what am I talking about? Hang on, hang on one second, I was. I just stepped out at one thirty to give testimony, I'm sorry.
We have plenty of time, just.
If you wanna, um, if we can.
Hi. Hi.
Um.
Been holding that.
I think Erin, Sarah, Brock left to drop up soon, so if you want to discuss the four bills in, um, we can do that, probably quickly, give them a little more guidance. They have some recommendations and ideas on positions for Lake County to take on bills. Um, so if you want to dive into that, then I think some of the other agenda items will be, will be quicker.
Sure. Sorry, someone, if we check what I have, okay, up there. Never mind. Um, okay. Um, thank you, Sarah, for hanging in there. What did?
Brock and Erin, one as well.
Yeah.
So we look for Erin's last email on week four. Um, there are four bills that they called out.
Yeah.
Um, and I think we can discuss those today and, uh, we can go in there.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Sarah or other members of the team, do, do you want to lead off with a quick discussion of the, of those four bills you highlighted for us? And then, yeah.
Sure, yeah, we can, well, hi again, everyone, we're all thrilled to be on the team. Um, I wanted to flag also in the build tracker, I think we have thirty-five bills that we flagged for you. Um, so when you have a chance to kind of flip through those and, and take a look, let us know. These are the ones that rose to the top of our list, but we might be missing something, so please take a look and, and let us know about the others. Um, so the first, and we'll kind of split these up, but I'll start on Senate Bill Two. This bill authorizes the different boards of county commissioners to establish an incentive program to offer unlimited county, county property tax credits or rebates in a program to directly improve an area of specific local concern related to the use of real property in the county. So at the hearing, CCI, CCAT, commissioners from Teller, Larimer, and Summit testified in support. They supported the broad nature of the bill to allow commissioners to look at the various needs of their community. So there was talks about like, oh, we have daycare deficiencies or we have affordable housing. So it really gives counties the opportunity to use these funds in the way that, that they see fit. It has strong support, really strong sponsors, so we recommend a support position for Lake County. And then Erin has, we, we, do you want us to go through all of them upfront or how do you want to do that? Do you want us to discuss each one?
Maybe let's do one at a time, just so we can keep our heads straight. Um, I can chime in on O, O, O two, um, I mean, yeah, we, we voted in favor of these for the CCI and CCAT positions. Sorry we couldn't make to testify and support, but I think, I definitely agree the authority given in O two is something we would have liked to have used in this tax year. Um, so yes, individually agree with that support.
Yeah, I do.
Statement.
Sorry, does it change, does it, does it, so the, currently you have to go to the ballot to change the allocations of the funding? And this is making it so that is imposing that?
My, my, my reading of the bill is that it allows a local taxing, a, a, a county or a local municipality to, um, to create tax rebates or tax incentives that would show up on the tax bill for, for a local benefit purpose.
Okay.
So in the same way, I think, I think in the bill language, it mentions that you can clearly do that for some energy-related items. It just expands the authority and it specifically, I think, is angled at giving more flexibility to sort of align some tax rebates and incentives with affordable housing policies or property tax relief motivation.
Okay, sorry, I was actually just too different.
Yeah.
Coming all together, so that was not on the same page, thank you.
So again, I think it's, it's what we had looked at doing under current authority and had been advised and decided that we did not have the legal authority to do that.
Okay. Great.
Okay, um, thanks, so yeah, so just to be clear, yeah, de- definitely agree with that, uh, support recommendation on O two.
Mm-huh.
Um, and if you have suggestions, I mean, you said it's going quickly through, looks like on the consent agenda in the Senate. If, uh, yeah, please flag for us if there's opportunities for written or in-person testimony.
Yes, we will.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's already gone through the Senate and it will be calendared in the House, so it moved really quickly through the Senate.
Yeah.
And the House is Rep. McCluskey, so it would be great to have you testify at that hearing.
Yeah, and we can drop a note just directly to her, like, I mean, drop her a text and say, thanks for being a part of this. Um, should we move on to twenty four, the standardized local lodging tax?
Yep, so that would be, um, this bill is coming out of the sale of used tax qualification task force and it's aimed at standardizing the reporting requirements around local lodging taxes with other local taxes collected. Um, well, the intent of the bill is really to simplify the way local lodging taxes are collected. However, um, many of the folks who did testify on this bill, um, are concerned that it actually makes things a little bit harder for counties in terms of collecting lodging taxes. So we did just want to flag this one for you, um, to talk about because it could make things a little bit harder. Um, the bill was laid over for consideration until a later date and are working with this bit of form to try to figure out how we can make this work properly for local municipalities.
Okay.
Yeah.
Adam's on, I just wonder, unless we don't want to take the time right now, but I am curious.
Well, well, maybe, let, 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 let me say two sentences and Adam chime in if I say something very incorrect. But I mean, if this is, I mean, we don't have a lodging tax in the county.
We do.
But, well.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, okay, right, sorry.
We have.
Okay, well, great, then. So I, sorry, then I guess, A- Adam, I don't know if you have seen this bill and have any thoughts on the complexity, uh, question? Or if you're able to speak.
I mean, if this, yeah, and I'm sorry, I, I didn't, uh, read through it, but if it, it seems to make sense to actually add it to, you know, all the other things you listed, sales tax and whatnot, but if there's some, and it, to my knowledge, it doesn't change what that lodging, uh, how or what the limitations are, correct? These counties are still limited to two percent sales tax or lodging tax, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but I think this is just on the collection, right?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
This, yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't think this, okay, she's taken. Yeah, this would just be the administration.
Yeah.
Doesn't sound like Adam is able to join, participate, but what can?
Yeah, so I, so I think so our next steps, we'll, we'll, um, circle back with staff and see if we have any strong views that aren't being captured by what CCI is doing on this. Um, so thirty-three on lodging property tax treatment.
Yep, so what this bill does is it actually changes the way lodging property taxes are treated. Um, it says that if you are a short-term property rental owner and you've, you've used that property for overnight lodging for less than thirty consecutive days throughout a calendar year, you can kind of decide if you're gonna pay taxes as residential or lodging property. So what it does is it says if you've used that property or leased that property out for overnight lodging for more than ninety days, you must be classified as lodging property. So I know that this is something that resort communities care about, some of the surrounding areas care about. So again, wanted to flag up for you all, um, for further discussion.
Yeah.
And then this one. Go ahead, Erin.
I'm sorry, um, we're recommending if this is something you're concerned with, that you take in a non-position.
Okay.
I, and I could, um, so I was part of the CCAT discussions of this and I sort of weighed in with some of the county or, or had discussions on the side with some counties that are, you know, um, very in favor of this. I think my, my take is that from Lake County, we're very sympathetic and supportive of the intent of, um, having a more fair approach to properties that are providing lodging uh, and are behaving somewhat more like a commercial entity than a pure residential entity. Um, I do think from, because we have, um, a short-term rental moratorium in the county and a short-term cap in the city and we're at relatively low levels of short-term rentals compared to other counties or jurisdictions, um, it's not as loom, you know, it, it's not as important an issue or as consequential an issue for us compared to other sort of housing policies or, or property tax policies as those other counties. Um, so we probably don't have as burning an urgency as those other counties have. That being said, I think, you know, we're definitely supportive of a more equitable treatment of short-term rentals in the tax code. And I think, I, certainly as one commissioner, I'd be open to, you know, and, and amend or monitor with constructive suggestions, position, you know, for example, I, I, I like the idea of creating a new category that's somewhere between residential and pure commercial at thirty-three percent, you know, for those entities that are, yeah, whether it's below ninety days or we, whatever the right number of days is, you know, some intermediate category. And really only if you're approaching like forty, fifty, sixty percent plus occupancy rate over the year that you get treated as full commercial. Um, you know, or if it's multiple properties under one ownership or some, you know, very open to sort of flexibly trying to make this land in a way that's both politically and sort of equitable, you know, politically more viable and equitable. So that was my spiel on that, I don't know how you all are feeling.
I think there's just more room for discussion there.
Yeah.
I, I like the multiple properties aspect of it, I'm also curious how this bill, if there's different language that changes like all the financing concerns that were brought up the first time around. Um, and I also wonder if, if then they, the, the part about the property owner deciding what category they fall in seems interesting to me and very, like, elusive. Um, and then, um, I wonder if they, if they decided to operate and be taxed and considered commercial, would then they not be, would a lodging tax then not apply to their use? It seems like it would be one or the other, not both. Is that, how, how, can somebody tell me what it, what, what the language is saying, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so what it does is it says if. Yeah, so what it does is it says if, if a resident is used for less than thirty consecutive days for overnight lodging, then that's where you get to make that decision. But once you get to ninety days, it has to fall under lodging, whether it's a commercial property or a residential property.
Okay, okay, and then is there anything mentioned about then you, then it's, I mean, then you're taxed at twenty-seven or twenty, whatever the percentage may be, and you aren't collecting also lodging tax in addition to that? Or is nothing mentioned there?
That I'd have to talk to the sponsors about a little bit more, because it really does, what the bill is intended to do is to change the way, to not allow folks who are renting their secondary homes out for more than, I think, consecutive days to just be taxed at a residential property rate. They have to be taxed for the lodging property rate.
I would, I would imagine that might be a big question for folks operating in, yeah, a rental like that or lodging like that. Do they then have to pay both taxes?
I can get more information on that too.
Okay.
But again, what I, what I'm hearing from us is like, we're, you know, we're, we're supportive of the intent of this and flexible on where those thresholds fall or exactly, you know, how, how that works.
Yeah, that, yeah, more in local kind of specificity on some of those details getting, allowing, allowing the local jurisdiction to, to create those scenes wise, but I agree with that.
I don't know, I, I, I mean, I, I don't know if they can give local jurisdictions the ability to classify, you know, tax, you know, classes of taxable property. I think they're going to have to define that at the state level for the assessment rate.
Yeah, because that's going to have to go through the Department of Taxation, I think.
Yeah.
So I think unfortunately this is going to be, I mean, I like, I would love that, but I think this is going to be a one-size-fits-all.
And great, somebody else is pretty great.
Uh.
Um, is it, is it allowing for, is it necessarily mandating that classification? Because I know, talking to Adam.
Because I think the, the way I'm reading this is that if you use it as a short-term rental for more than ninety days, you're on that, you're going to be taxed as a lodging property at thirty-three percent.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I don't think it offers any flexibility after that ninety-day mark.
And I think that's one of the areas, I certainly, like, as one commissioner, I'm, like, is ninety the right number? I don't know, you know.
Yeah, because there's some.
Is, that's twenty-five percent occupancy for the year, that's pretty low by, like, hotel standards. You'd go out of business if that was your commercial model.
Yeah.
And I, I remember seeing some data, I think that the number of short-term rentals that are a hundred and eighty days or more is really low, like, like, single-digit percentage points, so fifty percent occupancy.
It'd be interesting to have some more data on what that looks like in terms of changes to the way that they're operating on the VRBO and Airbnb platforms and what that looks like with anticipated shortage of vacation rentals in that, in mountain communities. So I'd be interested in some of the feedback from those communities.
Yeah, and, and, and something, I mean, with discussions with some of these resort counties who are in favor of this, you know, I've said, I mean, I would rather be flexible on the thresholds and criteria and get and keep the discussion moving, you know, than take a hard line on any particular number, you know. I mean, it's going to be a heavy lift, so I'd rather get the idea that there could be another classification on the books and then you can start fighting of like inching that up or modifying it. But to get that separate framework in place seems more important to me.
Yeah.
Than a hard line on any particular number.
Agreed.
I don't know if that's helpful.
And just so you guys know, this is Brock, there was maybe a hundred and fifty citizen stakeholder lobbyists in the building this morning, and they were specifically around this rent issue. And I would not be surprised, and they were all wearing the same shirts, Airbnb, VRBO was on it. There are a coalition of people that were lobbying a number of these issues today, and they, they showed out in real, real force this morning. And I would almost guarantee that this bill was brought up, and to Erin's point, it might be worth after today checking back in with CCI and with Senator Hanson on this.
Okay, thanks, yeah. Okay. One-one-five-two on accessory dwelling units.
I don't, because of the changes we've done to our local land use code, I'm not sure that this would impact us heavily, but.
We don't think it will, but we wanted you guys to look at this one because I'm sure as you guys were very involved last year, the ADU component became such kind of a, one of the pillars of everything that was going on last year. I think between Sarah, Erin, Erin and I, we didn't think that this would hit Lake County, but we wanted to make sure that you all got eyes on it because it is such a big issue here at the Capitol that we, and well, even if you guys say this does not impact us, we'll probably continue to keep an eye on it just because an issue like this is big enough, it could kind of go off the rails. But without knowing your specifics as well, Erin and Sarah and I did kind of think, as it is right now, wouldn't hit Lake County, but we definitely wanted you guys getting eyes on it.
Yeah, and, and this is, this is one of the sort of bill fragments from last year's two thirteen, right? Like, yeah, so I think I'll just make a comment, I think as two thirteen splits into like the strategic growth, like I said about, and I think what, an overarching frustration from us that I think we said before is so many of that, so much of that is like focused on metro or large county issues and a lot of things like the ADU, things we've either done or they're just not relevant because we either fall below a threshold or it's not our, our issue. So we can, we can try to capture that more crisply in a sort of set of, set of talking points. But I think that, that's almost like a overarching point for all of the two thirteen fragments.
Yeah.
And you're probably going to see about eight bills come out that are specific to what was two thirteen. So that's why, and ADUs is one component of that. So that's why, to your point earlier, Jeff, as some of this starts to roll out, I do think they're not, they're not going to jam anything through or try to. I think we'll have some time to have you all evaluate it, but especially on this one, it's kind of good to hear your perspective. And again, we'll keep an eye on it, but it's nice to know that as is, it's probably not a Lake County issue.
Yeah. Cool. Any other bills that you want to flag for us or sort of homework to give us? Other than, I mean, you mentioned like, you know, trying to slim down that full tracker and add anything else that, that the three of us or, or staff are tracking. So we'll, we'll take as homework, starting to work on, on that tracker and get it tightened up.
Yeah, I was, I was planning on going through the tracker and looking at some of those bills for, in particular with human services with Janine, scheduling some time to look at some of that with you.
Yeah, I'll point out, there is one really interesting one where they are proposing a statewide interpreter network for child welfare services. So it's something to keep an eye on, the counties are worried it'll be burdensome, but if Lake County could be the provider of that statewide network, that would be kind of cool.
Yeah, all right. There's one about rebates or something on mitigating properties, and I need to look at that harder. And I'm curious if Melanie might have any opinion on that. But I don't have any comments right now.
I don't either.
You guys are supporting one bill, it's Senate Bill fifty-eight out of the recreational use statutes.
Oh, yeah.
That bill, and Lake County testified on it, the Leadville race testified on it. I know that this has been a slog on that bill, you guys have been in a lot of stakeholding, especially with the trial attorneys, to get where you're at right now, that bill. And again, thank you, you guys for testifying on it, came out of the Senate Committee, and it has already cleared the Senate. So it will now go over to the House where I believe it's Representative Teton, Brianna Teton, and I can't remember the other sponsor, but that bill will start moving. And so far, that, the coalition of you all that's kind of helped negotiate some of that is staying together. And as long as people don't feel that there's any backtracking, the sponsors are pretty reticent to amending the bill. So I think that one should stay as is. But again, that, it was in committee two weeks ago and already cleared the Senate. So I think it'll probably keep moving along and by the end of February, maybe done as a process, but keep you updated about that, too.
Okay.
Great.
Can I ask a quick question? I'm sorry.
No, you have to.
I was going to ask, it sounds like there was agreement on Senate Bill two. Do we, do you want us to register as support or do you all need to have conversations for a formal motion? Or I wasn't sure how that works.
I think it's fine to register as support.
I know you have conversations on the other bills, but, okay.
I, I think you can, from our discussion, I think you can take that as approval for a support stance.
Okay, great. I didn't know if we needed to do a process or anything like that, so that's helpful.
Uh, I mean, I'll.
I think the consensus right now is to, to register support. I think if it were to be any major provisions or changes to it, it should come back to you and then perhaps you would.
Yeah.
Change its level.
Yeah, I mean, I think as a practical matter, like, we can't, we can't wait for formal votes on motions for every single position. We'll never, we'll, we'll never get it done.
Yeah, as long as you input your consensus in a public meeting, I think you're fine.
Cool.
Yeah.
Sounds good. And then at the, the end of this week, the legislation that was introduced this week, I would imagine you'll have updates on that as well? That, the stuff at the bottom of your email, Erin?
Yep, and so that bill title link is live that you guys get from us every week, so you could click on it today. And Sarah, Brock and I have all been working together to make sure any bill that we think affects or could have an effect on you all is added to that the moment it gets introduced. So you might click on it today and you might see more than what you saw on Friday, if you clicked on it on Friday.
Okay, great. Cool. Sounds good.
Cool. I, I think that's good for now and we'll, we'll, we'll get on our homework.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and send us any, and tell our feedback that you want, but thanks, you guys, appreciate it.
Great.
Yeah, thank you for hanging out.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thanks, Erin, this feels really good to be, yeah, a more engaged legislation, so.
Okay.
Okay, so that was agenda item number three. Move on to number four, thank you for hanging out. Discussion and consideration of the appointment of Louisa Forrest to the Lake County Public Library Board of Justice. Brenna, you have the floor.
I just need your vote. They voted, they interviewed her, she applied, she's great. I just need your vote.
Thank you. Do you want to give any background on Louisa for folks who don't?
Um, I don't, I mean, other than she works at Bag, I mean, I don't.
Yeah, I, I, but she, she actually came to Leadville from Columbia and was, worked for, uh, office for a brief time. She was an attorney in Columbia, but unfortunately her credentials didn't fit for her. And as Brenna says, I mean, she's done some great work and really engaged, great personality, and I think will be a go-getter for that board.
Yep, happy to have her.
Okay.
Uh, I'll move to appoint Louisa Forrest to the Lake County Public Library Board of Justice.
A second.
Uh, any further discussion?
None for me, thank you.
No.
None for me, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, okay, Louisa Forrest is hereby appointed.
Thanks.
Agenda item, she's number five, discussion and consideration of a memorandum of understanding with the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments WIC program and Lake County Public Health Agency.
I think Kelsey was here.
They signed it this morning.
They signed, we got it this morning, yes.
Yes, Kelsey had to leave, so.
Yes, so this is for the WIC program to share some office space over in the public hall to administer those programs, and so the MOU just addresses what the different roles and responsibilities we do have.
I'm going to do the second and fourth. Third, right?
Okay.
Okay. Great, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the MOU with the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments for WIC program and Lake County Public Health Agency, second.
Okay, any further questions or discussion?
No, thank you.
Hearing none, a call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion is approved, the MOU with the Upper Arkansas Area Council of Governments.
Thank you.
Uh, agenda item number six, discussion and consideration of Human Services Department's single case agreement. By Jenny?
Yes, so this is a standard protocol, state agreement? Anything else?
No, it, it, it's just, it is just a standard agreement, it's not one that I, I reviewed, I didn't see any need to negotiate anything with it. But in terms of the scope of the services and stuff.
This is a sort of a one-off for our child welfare unit, where typically we would be paying for something in our trail system that already has a state contract. This is the state saying you're allowed to do a, a single case for this particular case, make an agreement with this provider. That's what we're doing for supervised visitation.
Okay, I'll move to prayer of the Human Services Department, Department's single case agreement.
A second.
Great, any further?
No, they haven't.
No, okay, a call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the single case agreement is approved. Uh, agenda item number seven, discussion and consideration of a contract with Lumen to provide internet services to the Human Services Office.
Gosh, I'll take lead on this, and this will come at no surprise to most folks, including Commissioner Mudge, in terms here probably to attest to the difficulties we've had in working with Lumen over the course of months now, trying to get them, they sent an order, the order references an underlying contract, and to get them to provide us with that contract has literally taken forever. I finally got a sample of one. We, we have an agreement with Lumen to provide services at various facilities. For some reason, they can't connect with that, and so now we're looking at a standalone order and agreement for, you know, public health DHS facilities over on twenty-four. It would be for thirty-six months, provide internet access for twelve-hundred-and-eighty dollars a month, I think it is. But it is mind-blowing that they cannot seem to connect that with the services we already have. And, you know, it, it's one of those things, we're kind of desperate for the services, and I think they realize that. And so they've been very, very difficult in terms of responding. So they sent over their master agreement for just standard terms and such this morning, literally, probably twenty minutes before I walked in. So it has not been reviewed. My recommendation would be, if you all can approve it pending finally review, because we can actually find the agreement it's supposed to be connected to, perhaps we can provide it and not have to commit to a new thirty-six-month term, which is one of my concerns, is that we'll end up with these things that are staggered and they're not together. Or if not, we can't figure that out, then we'll go with what this is. But I know there's a time sensitivity of this, and that's why we've been working very hard to get them to, to engage with us. So that would be my recommendation for this.
Pending final legal review?
Yes.
I'll move to approve the Lumen contract to provide internet services to the Human Services Offices pending final legal review.
Second? Uh, discussion?
No, thank you.
A call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so that is approved, pending legal review.
Thank you.
Uh, agenda item number eight, discussion and consideration of a PSA with, I, Ivey?
Ivey Bailey.
I'd, thank you, Bailey, LLP for accounting and support services.
Sure, so this is in response to the RFP that we had put out and then two, two weeks ago, last week. We discussed, we had opened the RFP with the BOCC staff has worked with Ivey Bailey. So this would be, I guess, the, the final approval of the award of the bid for them for up to seventy-five thousand dollars. So much lower than all of their, all of their, of the bids put in. And if approved today, the kickoff call will start at three.
I will make a motion that we approve the, I'm sorry. I just.
P S A.
P S A with Ivey Bailey, LLP for pound. PSA with Ivey Bailey, LLP for County Support Services.
Second? And, um, and then Tim, sorry, I was looking at something on Lumen, this, this, this covers the entire scope?
Yep.
Um, and does it include that, the pieces of getting the twenty-two audit up?
No.
No, those are done.
But, so we have the draft?
Yes, so we, um, so it does not include work on the twenty-two audit, actually like finishing it, if you will. It does include reviewing our twenty-two audit.
Okay.
Um, for discrepancies and things there, um, so, yeah, but we, um, when we get to item ten, we have more, more information on that, um, we have, we'll tell you now, we have, um, Dallas's and Christine's and Jessa's and mine feedback to, uh, Hinkle and Company, then with the BOCC's feedback after that item, um, then we should be able to have, um, final audit tomorrow. Depending on our future, which is a lot, but, um.
Great.
Yeah.
Great.
Anyway, sorry, Long wanted to answer to your question, no.
Okay. I'm. It's fine.
Um, hey, well, uh, nice job on the negotiation of that, just.
That was a gentleman, Chris?
What some of the, thank you to everyone involved, yeah.
No, we're.
Yeah, right.
Excellent.
No further discussion for me.
Great, so call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, uh, so the PSA with Ivey Bailey, LLP for County Support Services is approved. Good luck on your three o'clock call. Uh, item nine, agenda item nine, discussion and consideration of server operating system updates for Lake County Information Technology Systems.
Hello, uh, our current operating system is, is outdated, um, and the, a couple holes, um, there's security or performance issues potentially, and, um, and it's to meet on ASAP.
Okay.
So we received a proposal from BiTech to upgrade all eight of our servers. The total bill comes in around fifty-two thousand dollars.
This may seem familiar to you because you did approve this last year, however, it was never worked done with the transition of the former, um, okay, IT Director, um, but now it's time.
Okay.
And we will, and Tom, Tom, um, has the capabilities to work through it and to start this work as soon as possible.
Awesome.
Taste that clarification, I was like, how many service systems do you have?
But that's, but that's, I think, yeah, I remember number six, but is, does that include the sheriff's office as well? Or is that just our, you know, separate?
No, that is just the county's, the sheriff's is still with. Probably last.
Okay, but it, does it include our satellite, the airport, and the public works location servers and everything? Okay, great, and then will we update the mapping, our network mapping? Cause that was a big question at one point, does Applied Tech keep our mapping, um, current?
This particular being would just be for the operating system, um, currently providing Windows two thousand and twelve, which is no longer supported by Windows, um, so no updates and patches are pushed through.
So that would be a separate scope.
Yep.
There's no new firewalls needed or anything like that?
Not currently, no.
All right.
Um, I mean, there will be once we have, um, a, uh, fiber system in place for public health or there we need for a new firewall to connect the courthouse to that particular, uh, building, and then, uh, that should be it.
Okay, great, thank you. Did we make a motion or?
No, make a motion, yeah. I would welcome.
Um, I'll move to approve, um, the work with Applied Tech for the server operating system updates and upgrades.
I'll second.
No further discussion from me.
Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, uh, the, yeah, approval for that expense or the, uh, server operating system updates. And thank you for getting on.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Okay, uh, item, agenda item number ten, discussion and consideration of the Lake County twenty-twenty-two audited financial statements.
Sure, so, um, late last week, um, Jessa and I finally received a draft of our twenty-twenty-two audit. Um, we have, uh, I've reviewed that, Dallas has reviewed it, Christine has reviewed it, Jessa has reviewed it, um, and it is in your packet if you would like, I'll let you review it. Um, the biggest thing for the commissioners, I think, like, well, a couple of things. Biggest thing is, you know, we will have, we do have an audit finding regarding our lack of internal controls, um, which was something that was kind of expected, nothing, um, surprising there. Uh, there's some of the staffing changes, um, and trainings in the finance office, um, are already tackling that work. And then, of course, the work with Ivey Bailey will address that audit finding. There are, there are questions, um, in the audit and some of the, um, just some of the areas where how the auditor determined, um, our positions in certain areas. So that's based on Christine and Jessa's review of things, so working through that. We, you know, and it kind of right now depends on how you would, um, like to move forward. I'm happy to, if you have any questions for Jessa to answer more in depth, or if you have any questions for Dallas or myself, of course, please, please ask or provide any comments. And we can talk through those, um, but then if we, you know, provide all the feedback to the auditor. Um, today, we should be able to get that, uh, final audit, uh, to the state, well, to us and then to the state by tomorrow. Excuse me, um, so, but with that, I will open it up to any feedback the board has. And then we can talk about our, our strategies going forward with Ivey Bailey, the work in the finance department. You know, we are, essence, since we're already a year behind in our, more than a year behind on our twenty-two audit, you know, we will be delayed on our twenty-three audit, not this far, um, but probably will seek that, uh, extension from July to September thirtieth. Um, there, we have discussed, uh, releasing an RFP to, um, help us to, to find a new firm um, for our twenty-twenty-three audit. Um, I think our, there's, there's fault on both sides to our relationship with our current auditor, but, um, it might be, might be in everybody's interest to, um.
Start fresh.
Start fresh, um, probably for a stopgap audit firm of one year of, uh, to do the twenty-twenty-three, and then actually do kind of like a bid out for a longer-term auditor for like three to five years. Yeah, so a broad overview, uh, Jessa, if you have any comments, or board, if you have any questions, please ask and we can try and, uh, answer those. Dallas, Stephanie's also read it, um, did you read the audit?
I hope it's on it.
Okay.
I don't have any specific questions, I just, yeah, invite any comments from Jessa or Dallas for sure, so.
Um, this is Jessa, so I do have a few comments. Um, one of the things that we ran into with the twenty-two audit is that there seems to be a moving target of some kind. Um, this was something that was quickly identified early on with new leadership in the finance department, um, and it is a direct result of the finance department not reconciling their month-end, so their warrants, fund balances, things like that. So it makes it rather difficult and, um, for our auditors to even perform a sound audit, if you will. Um, so with that said, we know, um, going into it, and like Tim said, it is fault on both sides. Um, we are getting, um, the finding for improper internal controls for not producing timely financials. Um, but at the same time, just looking at previous audits, um, the twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, there are discrepancies between the budget and the audit, um, that are easily identifiable. So we put together the RFP, um, to put out the bid for new auditors for twenty-twenty-three. Um, the reason we're not moving forward with a long-term contract now, um, is because we didn't want to snuff out Ivey Bailey if they would be interested in doing a long-term contract, because if they're doing the work for twenty-three, they could not actually do a long-term contract and they could not, um, do a contract for twenty-four. So for independents, we are only doing a one-time, one-year RFP.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Good.
Is that guy having?
No, I just, I think we're light years ahead of where we were twelve months ago. And the best thing is, uh, more people are involved and know what the areas of concern is, which means we can be more efficient at resolving some of those long-term. The issues that we, we know of right now, I don't think are significant and material, you know, it's, we, we're, we're looking at the right accounts. So I'm, I'm really excited about going forward with this year's gonna look like.
Cool. Tim, if we have questions or comments, what's the best way to get those to you on the time period that you want those back in?
Um, if you could provide them to me and Jessa, um, you know, as soon as you have them, uh, in an email, we will ensure that Hinkle and Company gets them. Um, and then, you know, also, you know, review them, see if there are things that we can answer, um, and then pass them along to Hinkle and Company.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yeah, so any feedback you guys do have, um, please send our way.
Sounds good.
And we'll shoot, we'll shoot for end of this week, having a final audit.
Sounds good.
If that, that works, yeah.
So I'll look for a motion to accept the Lake County twenty-twenty-two audited financial statements.
I'll second.
Um.
Oh, I'm sorry, so moved. I won.
I'll second. Uh, yeah, I just, I, I think there was feedback to Hinkle, and so this draft may change.
Correct.
Yeah, so if you, I guess, um, I don't know, but if it is, you know, acceptance.
With the, with.
With on, yeah, with.
With your.
Steph's final.
Final approval or, or.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Um, based on Steph's final review or.
As I say, pending.
Pending.
Pending the county, I'd say the county.
Can't manage to respond, yeah, final review, okay, alright.
So we're back to your motion? My motion? To be, um, acceptance of the twenty-twenty-two audited financial statements pending final review by the, and acceptance by the county manager.
Second.
Okay, much better.
Thank you.
The.
Uh, no further discussion from me?
No.
We will get that conversation or that feedback within.
Yeah, we have the, we have, um, feedback from, uh, Christine from today, from just before this meeting. Jessa's already provided extensive feedback to Hinkle. Um, I, outside of both of theirs, I don't have a lot, um, of feedback, but anything Commissioner Marcela or any, any other board members want to send, if you can get it to me and Jessa as soon as possible, that would be great. Um, and then we will work with the auditor firm, auditing firm.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye, so that motion to accept the audited financial statements pending final review by the county manager, uh, is approved. Um, can I hand off chairing of the final agenda item and the consent agenda? I just wanna, I need to be registered for the remote testimony.
Yes.
Sure, sounds good.
So I don't want to miss that.
Sounds good.
Just for under five minutes, this is.
Yeah. Yeah. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Yeah.
Alright, last, item of new business on our agenda, item eleven, the discussion and consideration of a lease at Moose Haven for, um, county workforce housing, and we have Jackie Villain here with our housing, who is our housing director? Director, sorry. Um, yeah, would you guys, I know, I think the manager, you know, Tim and Jackie may have talked to all of us and have been worried about this, but can you give us another review, please?
So the intent was to provide some housing for employees as they come in, so there is a landing place for them, they're gonna find housing. For, um, but this gentleman was interested in renting his property. He normally rents to climax employees, um, but would consider renting to the county. And so, um, I was wanting to be able to pursue, and also, but I think, I think Moose Haven's property is good. I, I can reach out to folks that own multi-unit, so I would like to make this kind of beg and just to Moose Haven specific about seeking additional, um, master leases at Moose Haven or county places.
So the, the agenda items really to just give direction and not, um.
Actually, but we do have one pending that I think is gonna be time-sensitive because they do have another tenant, someone lined up. And so, it's my impression they wanted to go in and try to pursue that one. So I think they were on tennis to try to, as Jackie said, develop a master lease for multi-unit, um, owners with Moose Haven. But the one for now, I choose to need to act on the one that's currently pending, um, which is an individual unit, um, that. The challenge with this is that Moose Haven is an condominium, and so they have all of their covenants restrictions, requiring schools right there, and all that kind of stuff, and one of which is a specific requirement that the lease include a verbatim statement about compliance with their organizational documents and all that kind of stuff. So I received those this morning, plowed my way through them, um, so we need to finalize the lease, um, for that unit, and that is unit, I mean, we can, for the record, just specify which unit that's.
Twenty-four.
The unit twenty-four at Moose Haven, um, and the, the monthly, it would be eight hundred dollars a month. It includes utilities except for internet and telephone, I guess, if they, um, something like that. Um, but then no pets, so there's not an issue with any type of pet deposit or anything like that. The security deposit, I understand, is one month, so that would be eight hundred dollars as well. Um, my, my only concern is ensuring that we're gonna be in a position to comply with all of the HOA requirements.
And Ms. R, I, I forgive me, I don't remember if our, was it Fourteenth or Thirteenth Street? Master lease was a year or six months, would we suggest, because we don't yet have someone, like, waiting to move in? Can we do a six-month lease, or what's the request from the property owner?
So, so the minimum is, they don't allow short-term rentals, the minimum is usually six months.
Yeah, it is six, yeah, that's what the HOA requirements are for six months, which would be my recommendation at this point.
Yeah, that's right.
So it also allows us to kind of test it out.
Yeah.
Um, I know, I think the sheriff's office has a potential candidate for the unit, um, and so, and again, I think it's intended to be more transitional housing for new employees who didn't, so they can find a housing.
Okay.
I think the six months would be, so we'll get, test it out.
Alright, so, looking for a direction to pursue overall, but also we have, we do have a lease in hand, or we do not?
It's drafted, so my, my request would be a, a approval.
It's drafted, with six-month term?
And.
And the provisions of making them compliant with the.
We, we won't get. Yeah, the, this has done the initial draft, I've reviewed the, the HOA documents this morning, and we need to incorporate some provisions into the lease to address those, and so my request would be, uh, you know, to approve pending final legal review, um, anticipate issues with the property owner right now for that. So, but obviously, if issues come up with the terms of the lease and we need to bring them back, we will come back to you and ask for a special meeting or something to approve that.
Okay, and then just for public, you know, just for acknowledging that, you know, our process then has been, um, having been through this once before, we then go through a process to approve a lease with a tenant, and so that is a separate process.
And so, and, and I'm sorry, Mr. Marz, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but the, the process we're taking with these rental units that the county is leasing, is we're not doing subleases with our employees, we're doing licenses that allow them to occupy, and that way we're allowed to tie it to their employment without having to comply with all the underlying landlord tenant requirements.
Okay, okay, thank you, now that's a good reminder for the right lingo. Do you have a problem with the six-month?
No, I don't.
Term? Okay, um, I'll entertain a motion to a, approve the lease, um, on unit twenty-four. Uh, at Moose Haven with a six-month term and pending final legal review.
I'll second.
Sorry, I think I said I'll entertain.
Oh, I'm sorry, so moved.
I'm acting it, I can't make a motion, I'm, okay, I will second, any further discussion?
None for me, thank you.
Uh, any, I don't think we missed anything there, okay. No further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, and then, I am comfortable giving you direction to pursue other opportunities in Moose Haven and elsewhere, but, um. Yeah, so if you feel more comfortable with a formal, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, direct Jackie to take advantage of any other opportunities that might be present at Moose Haven for a long-term leasing.
So moved.
Second, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, uh, hearing out all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, and the only thing left on our agenda is the consent agenda, which includes, um, our January twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-four payroll and the January veteran services report. Any questions?
No, I will make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
And I'll second, any? And I'll second, any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that will be it, um, Hunter, could you please table all those minutes that were in the consent, consent agenda to our next regular meeting, please? Thank you. Um, and with that, we will adjourn at one-thirty and go into our board of health.
At two.
At two.
Oh, geez.
Seeing it up.